Ready?
Let's go.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Steve, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Nelson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Colacott?
Here.
Councilwoman Fastinelli?
Present.
Councilman Pitts?
Here.
Councilman Racini?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to continue our tradition of having a Villa Park distinguished citizen leading us in the pledge. Tonight, we have Dr. Elliot Brenda. Dr. Brenda is a retired clinical professor of surgery at the University of California, Irvine School of Medicine. Dr. Brenda was born in Brooklyn, New York, and attended New York University and medical school at the State University of New York in Buffalo. Dr. Brenda did his internship and residency at New York Hospital at Cornell Medical Center. After completing a year of surgical internship at New York Hospital, Cornell Medical Center, he was drafted in the Army and spent six months as commanding officer, 37th Medical Company, attached to 11th Armored Cavalry in Phu Loy, Vietnam, in six months as chief emergency service, third fil hospital in Saigon. On return to the United States, he was chief emergency services, Letterman Army Hospital in San Francisco. At the completion of his military duties, he returned to complete a surgical residence at Mount Zion Hospital in San Francisco in 1977. In 1985, he moved to Orange County, California, where he practiced general surgery until 2003, when he retired. During this period, he was chief of surgery multiple times and chief of staff for Garden Grove Hospital. Since his retirement, he's been doing voluntary surgery in Cambodia. In April of 2016, he founded Surgeons for Cambodia, Inc., a nonprofit corporation dedicated to improving surgical care in Cambodia. Dr. Brendan and his wife Julie have lived in Villa Park for 29 years, and he's a member of Villa Park Rotary Club. I give you Dr. Brenda.
Well, thank you. That, uh... I really honestly don't have a lot to add. We are working with several grants right now on my Cambodia project. What we're actually doing is, the easiest way to say it is, we're setting up an American clinic at the Khmer Soviet Friendship Hospital, which is the largest public hospital in Cambodia. So, we're gonna have an American clinic in a communist hospital. I thought that's very cute. Anyhow, our plan is, we're going to have a senior resident and then a senior American supervisor, and it's all gonna be starting December the 1st. Okay, so, I'm supposed to lead you in the pledge of allegiance, so everybody, please rise, put your hands over your heart or salute if you've been a veteran, and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Dr. Brenda, I have a distinguished citizen pin here for you, and I'd also like for you to take a picture with the full council. Could you please join me down here?
Is that a distinguished citizen pin?
Ready, one, two, three. All right. Yep, got a couple.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Brenda.
At this time, I'd like to ask all those in the audience to please silence your cellphones or turn them off if possible. The Villa Park City Council staff welcomes you to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. Speech cards can be found at the entrance to the city council chambers. Speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. Our first thing we have up is a proclamation recognizing the month of September as World's Alzheimer Awareness Month. This particular... close to me since I found out a good friend of mine's wife just today has Alzheimer's. So, the city of Villa Park is going blue this month to recognize that September is World's Alzheimer Awareness Month, a time to recognize that 47 million people globally are afflicted with Alzheimer's. Alzheimer's disease is the most common form of dementia, and it is fatal. Currently, there is no way to prevent, cure, or slow the progression of Alzheimer's, and it is the third leading cause of death in Orange County. Since 1982, Alzheimer's Orange County has been Orange County Center for Alzheimer's Resources. They are dedicated to providing quality care and support service to thousands of residents of Orange County who are afflicted with Alzheimer's disease or other related dementia, and also partnering with local researchers to populate clinical trials to help find a cure. Alzheimer's Orange County is based in Irvine, available to more than 84,000 residents in Orange County currently living with Alzheimer's disease. Villa Park residents and Anaheim County staff member Kathleen Jeanette will be accepting today's proclamation. And again, I'd like for the council to join me and take a picture with her.
Oh, that's cute. Well, that's really cute.
Get ready, one, two, three. All right, I got some.
One more.
One more, one more, one more.
One, two. Got it. Did I not finger you?
You didn't.
It was like one, two. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Kathleen Jeanette, resident of Villa Park and an advocate for Alzheimer's Orange County. I became involved because my dad also had a form of dementia. So, on behalf of Alzheimer's Orange County, I wanted to thank the mayor, the city council, and the city of Villa Park for acknowledging September as World Alzheimer's Day. One of our largest fundraisers is coming up. It's the Walk for Alzheimer's, and we'd like to invite you all to join us. We have one in Laguna Nigal, one in Huntington Beach, and one at Angel Stadium. We have over 10,000 participants every year, so please come on out and join us. You can sign up on www.alzoc.org, and I also left some literature that will be in City Hall, I believe? Yes, thank you. So, again, thank you very much. We appreciate all your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is just some literature.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enough? Enough? Yeah, we've got enough. Okay. Next, we have a presentation to the city's new website by Brea IT. Randy.
One second. Good evening, Mayor, city council. Well, thank you for this opportunity to present what I believe is a great new, fresh look for the city's website. So, I'm gonna take a few minutes and go through the website and give you an overview of some new features and answer any questions you might have. So, the first slide I wanted to point out before I began is, I had to render it a little smaller because I wanted to get most of the homepage on one screen to kind of go through it, so that's not the actual size of the pane of the website. So, I just wanted to clarify that. So, some of the items that we did is, I think we tried to give you, like I said, a fresh look and kind of streamline things and provide multiple access for your visitors. So, we've done that through a few ways. We've got some quick links. So, on the right side of the slide, there's an area where you can add quick links to quickly access information. On the mainframe of the website, we also have a city news area, wherein that's a slide that actually continually rotates, provides important news, events that are going on for the city. We also have the calendar feed on the main page, which displays most recent events for... that are coming up in that area. And then below, we've kind of added some defined areas for residents, businesses, and visitors to also find what they may be looking for quickly. The top of the page, we've got your navigation, and one of the items on there I'll talk about a little bit later, it's a "How Do I?" section, so it's full of information as far as how do you do certain processes for... or find information related to the city. Okay, I wanted to put this one up there. This is more of how the front page really looks, so I wanted to make sure you were able to kind of see what it really looks like as opposed to that tall, skinny frame that was on the first slide. So, that's gonna be the front page of your website. The next page, I wanted to point out a couple new items. So, this first one is, we've put in a link for your committee audio feed, so that I know that you record your committee meetings via audio. So, we put a link there to access that. So, when you click on that link, it takes you to this page, and you just click on whatever committee you're interested in hearing the audio feed for, and then below, it'll have the dates associated with the meetings, and you just click on the date, and it'll automatically start playing the recording of that particular meeting. We also have done the same thing as far as your streaming for your council meetings. So, same process that you would click on council meeting videos, it would take you to this page. It's sorted by years, so you would click on the year you're looking for, and it also will give you a list of dates. You pick the date that you're looking for, for the meeting, and then you can run the video. Now, currently today, I believe that's done going through YouTube. This one is more integrated directly into your website, so that your visitors don't have to go to YouTube. It's embedded inside, and it'll just run right there.
Will that be for prior council meetings also?
Correct. Yeah.
For the archive?
Yes. Okay, this is what I was talking about a little earlier. This is, if you click on the "How Do I?" navigation at the top, it will give this long list of items you can do. How do I request information? How do I find information? So, that's an added advantage for someone, like I said, multiple ways to locate and find information that they're looking for. The one I highlighted was related to, I believe, your conference room request. So, if you click on that item, we've integrated a new process for your community residents or whoever wants to request the rental of your conference rooms, where there's a two-step process. They have to register, which gets their information, so that we can have that on file to communicate with them, and then once they put in their login information, they click the link to actually go into an online form. So, this is a preview of the online form. On the top section is all of your conditional use information for them to review, and then the lower section would be where they would choose the room that they'd like to request, and then provide the rest of their information, their name, you know, the dates and those type of things. And then that kicks off a workflow process in the background that sends a confirmation email to that individual that their request has been submitted, and then it sends an internal email to city staff to continue the process as far as reserving the room and communicating with the user that's requesting it.
Are we able to collect fees through this process?
At this point, that's a next phase. We haven't included that yet, but we do have plans in integrating that part to it.
The automation will be with business licenses with respect to the online reservation room. We'll be moving into that. So, that's sort of an improvement. I'm sorry, could you hear me? What we started with is just the basic boilerplate, and we're moving into that. So, that element of being able to pay online will in fact be installed as far as we move, as we develop into this. So, this is just sort of the initial phases of getting it on, getting it up, and improving what we have, and we'll be doing business licenses will be integrated into it, as will calendaring and all those things. So, those will be incorporated as we move into this.
Are you gonna bring it up into production and then make those things available, or are you planning on doing everything at once and then bringing it into production?
I think some of... we'll be bringing it up and then adding into it elements. So, there's a lot of features on here that we don't have at present, so we believe bringing up is an improvement over where we were. So, we're bringing it up, and we'll be adding feature after feature to it. So, we'll make announcements as we do that, so there'll be new news popping up.
Yeah, we just need to be informative when we do that, so that people don't not pay a fee or something, make a mistake, and then we book the room for somebody else or whatever, and just don't want to cause a problem, that's all.
Yeah, there's a little bit more involved in kind of creating that whole process of how we're gonna collect fees. So, what we decided was just to go with replacing the current paper process, at least automate that, which is what we've accomplished.
Okay. Thank you.
The next area here is, I wanted to show you, is another example of an online form. So, this is a page where someone can submit either a potential, if they believe there's a code violation, they can use this page to enter that into the website. Would also... there'd be a process behind that, that would start an email that would go to the designated staff, and if they wanted to report graffiti or an outage of a street light, something like that, it's all would be handled through this online form process. So, I just wanted to show it because we wanted to add as much online form capabilities and try to get away from the paper process.
And that online form, is that an anonymous... is that an anonymous form? Because that... there's a room for abuse at that point, so...
Correct. So, the way it's set up now is, it states that if you want to stay anonymous, then you can still call the phone number and submit it that way. If you don't care about that, then you can use the online form.
Okay, thank you.
The next slide, I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of the viewing of the website on a mobile device. So, this first screen is how it would render on a phone. So, you can see it renders to the size of whatever mobile device you have, and that would be... the example up there would be the main page and some of the other pages related to that. So, I wanted to point that out, so that you are aware that it does really render nicely. This is another example. This would be an iPad, so how it would render on a tablet or an iPad or some other mobile device, that you get a good... it fits the size of the screen, and it... all the functionality works the same. So, I did want to kind of point that out. And that's really the... all I had as far as an overview. I'm welcome to answer any questions you might have. If you wanted to see a live demo, we can do that as well. I just really wanted to open it up.
Question I have is, when will it be up and running?
So, we'll be working with staff.
I can say, we would like to go up the 29th of August. We'll be bringing it all up live. We wanted to present it to the council first. Again, this is the first, and it'll be continual improvement on this. We believe there'll be significant advances down the road, but this architecture allows us to add things as we move along, so we have a very flexible architecture and setup. But the initial setup, and will be an announcement in the feeder and various things online, but it'll go up on the 29th. And what we'll do too, is the same email... I mean, I'm sorry, the same website address will automatically just pick it up. It isn't like somebody have to punch in something new. It'll just start showing up at that, on the new. So, there's the site that you see right there. That's the picture of what they'll see, the header, if you will, the banner.
Correct. And with the extra time, it gives us time to... there's a couple other online forms that we've worked with, talked with the staff about. We want to do something for someone to public request, for public record request, and perhaps a business license. So, those are a couple projects we want to wrap up before we go live, so that'll be included in the Go Live.
Is there a public comment or forum in which they can make suggestions about the website or issues and problems that they may have and things like that, so not ringing it off the phone necessarily? They're able to do that through the website?
Correct. So, "About Us," "Contact Us." You go down and click on "Contact Us." Okay, so, feedback. Okay. up like for an online form, so they can put in all that information.
Thank you.
So, our hope is to, we've been talking to the number of the entities, so we have not just a city of Villa Park, but a real true city calendar. There's a lot of events that are happening, so again, we're trying to get a larger, more comprehensive, so there are a lot of events that happen that aren't necessarily city-sponsored. We'd like to be able to have on there. So, that's gonna take a little bit of time and a little bit of coordination, but again, I think where we have here was a focus on taking what we had, the next step, and that's what we've done, and then we'll be adding on it with a larger vision down the road. I think this will be much more improved and much more useful to the average resident, and I think that's something we're trying to get to sooner than later, but we did want to get you a chance to see what we're going live with, and something that we think is a good project. Kim in our office has worked with Randy, and she's responsible for a large portion of how far we've gotten. There's a lot of details that take just to get here, as you can imagine, so we're really... I'm really proud of it, and I really appreciate the work that staff have done, Randy and Kim have done to get us this far. So, again, there is an input phase. We believe there's more, so I think business licensing, permitting, and those kinds of things will be up and running on it, but you have to start, and you have to get something up, so this is sort of the initial version of that step.
And I just wanted to mention one last thing as far as staff's input. One thing we wanted to provide was something that was easy to maintain, so it has a real strong content management to it, so that staff doesn't need any outside help in maintaining the website, and Kim can testify to that. She's done a great job in going in there and doing a lot of adding content and migrating information off of your existing website, so wanted to make sure that was a high priority, and I think we accomplished that, so...
Any further questions?
No.
If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to it. Next, we have a presentation by the Orange County Sheriff's Department.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having me this evening. I'm very pleased to talk about the crime report for July. Typically, and I think we've talked about this before, during summer months, you would expect to see a rise in the crime rates, but for July, we've seen a significant decrease in the number of Part I crimes committed in Villa Park. So, I'm pleased to report that we had a total of three crimes, three Part I crimes for July, and if somebody would have locked their car, we would have had two. So, that being said, there were two residential burglaries, one on the 1800 block, and I'm gonna mispronounce this street, but Rose Now Circle, where there was a forced entry through a side gate and a rear garage door, and there was a loss of multiple computers and cash. We had another residential burglary, and it was unknown whether or not the house was locked, so I'm hesitant to say that the door was left unlocked, but there were no signs of forced entry. And to make it even more unique, the loss was women's clothing and a stove. So, I've never seen a stove stolen from a house before, but...
It's a stove, all right.
There we go. The last one that we had was a petty theft, and this was on the 9,000 block of Henderson Way, where a purse, wallet, backpack, speaker, cash, and a driver's license were taken from an unlocked vehicle. Now, in addition to a reduction of crime, we've also seen a serious reduction in the number of traffic accidents in the city, too. We had a total of two, and these were both single-vehicle collisions, one into a center median and one into a light pole, both resulting in no injuries. And that's my crime report. Are there any questions?
Great report.
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. This past Monday, the Orange County Sheriff's Department provided me with a tour of Orange County on their helicopter, Duke Two, and your officers that took me up there were very professional. They took me from here almost to San Clemente, went to Rancho Mission Valley, I hope it was raining that day, and we took an aerial tour of Villa Park. We were circling for quite some time, actually, so if you heard it over there, it was us, looking over people's homes, and I know that we did see some of the neighbors. Took a very in-depth aerial tour of the encampment over Pacific Center, as well as on the riverbed. We looked at the empty dam, and certainly it was empty, didn't stink at that point, but I got to see things that our residents hear about but will never be able to see. And the one thing that they did show me is certainly what they're working on now is more search and rescue, and they did make a very good pitch for the fact that they can, sorry, we'll get to you in a second, that they certainly can take over the search and rescue. And that was something that I did listen to, and I certainly will listen to both sides, but I appreciate it. They have a very good department. They have nine people in that department. They have two helicopters and one on order, from my understanding, and they have about 23 full-time... well, part-time reservists, and these are the people who, if we do have any sort of a search and rescue, or... and they need any assistance on the ground, would be able to assist the sheriff department, if I'm correct. And they're very dedicated, and they spoke extremely highly of them. But this particular tour that I took is Phase One. The other tour that I'm taking is Phase Two, which will be this Thursday, which will... I will visit the encampments by foot, but thank you very much for doing that. It was about two years in planning, and I finally got around to it, and the helicopter ride, I have to tell you, it was good. I didn't do it in Hawaii, but I did it in Villa Park, and it was good. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Any further questions? I believe we do have a presentation for the sheriff. While you're here.
We're Wayne and Mary Silzell, Villa Park Neighborhood Watch coordinators. And, uh, we, as a result of the fine planning of Anetu Patanek, Steve Franks, and Jeff Pickett, were able to participate in a very successful Villa Park celebration of National Night Out on August 1st, which despite the thunder, lightning, rain, was successful. We had a good turnout. We had a good participation by community merchants and community organizations. And as we were able to have sign-ups, we gained several people for Neighborhood Watch and also for the Do Not Solicit list. As we've done in the past, we've encouraged residents, and particularly the children, to stop by and to sign a, a thank you card for our sheriff's department, to thank them for protecting us and for being our friends. And we would like to present that tonight to the Orange County Sheriff's Department with the appreciation for all the citizens in Villa Park.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I thought perhaps we could put that in the deputy's, uh, office because they're the ones on the feet on the ground, and they're the ones-
Yes, sir.
-who have earned the right to get that thank you because they take us, they keep us safe.
Yes, sir, we can definitely do that.
Do that? Just for a while, anyway? So they all get a chance to see it?
We can definitely do that.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Jeff, we appreciate it. Uh, I wanted to add, uh, thank yous to, uh, Steve and to Anetu Patanek-
Patanek.
Patanek, I'm sorry. And, uh, for the, or organizing the National Night Out. Uh, it was a good turnout by the merchants, as Mary said, and it was a good turnout by our community. We could have had more, of course, but as the years go on, we'll have it again. And we'll also have a, uh, which was overwhelming success, was the, uh, uh, home safety, uh, program that we had, uh, Home Security Fair is what we called it. And we'll have that again with purveyors that will bring us up to date on the latest in electronic equipment that's available to protect our homes and our communities. So, thank you again for the time, and we're glad to have such a fine service by our sheriff's department. Even though they're costly, they do a great job for us. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Wayne.
Wayne, thank you too for your all's participation and help that night, too.
Glad to do it.
Glad to do it.
Next, we have the Orange County Fire Authority.
Good evening, Mayor Nelson, City Council, city staff, and residents of Villa Park. My name is Ron Roberts. I'm one of your battalion chiefs assigned here in the city of Villa Park. As far as our reporting period, this last one, we, as you can imagine, our largest percentage of calls of service were medical aids at 62%. Fortunately, we had no fire loss or fire damage during this reporting period. Uh, as far as a safety message for this evening, I'd just like to remind everyone, we're coming into the heat that we traditionally get during the year. We have Labor Day weekend coming, and just remain vigilant around bodies of water. Make sure you don't swim alone, and please keep an eye out, especially on children. Uh, drowning and bad accidents can happen very quickly and very quietly. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have council member attendance reports. First is Orange County Musquito and Vax Control District, and that is mine. And I did not attend the last meeting because I had a conflict. So we'll go on to the Orange County Sanitation District.
I attended the, uh, meeting of the Orange County Sanitation District Board of Directors on July 26th. The agenda was pretty routine, again, focusing on infrastructure maintenance and improvement to ensure that we have, uh, a good, effective, well-run system that is, uh, cost-effective. Also received a, uh, a copy of the General Manager's Report this week and, uh, which was announced that for the fourth straight year, the Orange County Sanitation District has met all of its discharge limitations and its, uh, discharge permit to the ocean, which is a good thing for our environment. So they're doing a good job.
Any questions? If not, go on to the Orange County Fire Authority. I attended the last meeting in July, and at the meeting, they had recognition Avalon Fire Captain John Murphitt. He was a firefighter that rescued the passengers in a plane crash on the 405. So the board recognized him at the meeting. And they had a public hearing, a document, their fee schedule for the services they provide to make sure they, uh, getting full cost recovery, and the board approved all the fees. Although there was a lot of discussion on one minor fee for about a buck and a half that Todd Spitzer wanted to know if they couldn't reduce it, but they left it as it was. Uh, and they also, um, reduced, they, to reduce overtime, self-prep, send a proposal to restore 42 frozen positions on the master position control, 15 fire captains, 15 fire apparatus engineers, and 12 firefighters. And then authorize 50 firefighters and next two academies and move both academies up one month. They found that with the new perp, the, um, overtime, uh, the pension benefits are not so great. So therefore, uh, they don't get as much savings from overtime as they've gotten in the past. So they're trying to beef up staff and reduce overtime. And the last thing is that, um, I don't know if all of you heard last Thursday, but the fire chief unexpectedly resigned last Thursday. And we have no idea why. That concludes my report. Next, we have, um-
Is there another-
Orange County Library Advisory Board.
Excuse me, mayor, is there another meeting coming up for OCFA? Do they have a, an emergency meeting planned?
We have a meeting coming up this Thursday.
Is it a regular meeting or an emergency meeting?
It's a, it's a, uh, not a regular meeting, it's a special meeting.
For, for this reason? Okay.
Well, it, it actually, it was initially come up because last meeting, we had closed session about, um, attorney provides some information on, uh, liabilities for cities under the pension liability, and they continued it to the August meeting. But then they've added some things to it, and one of them is, is to discuss, uh, the future of the fire chief and what they're going to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, next is Orange County Library Advisory Board.
Unfortunately, I had a conflict, couldn't attend.
Uh, Budget and Finance? Oh, no meeting. Uh, Community Development and Public Safety?
Okay, the, uh, Community Development and Public Safety Committee met on August 14th, and we received a number of staff reports, um, cleaning an update on sober living, and, uh, it still appears that our best hope of having an impact on the sober living issue is to work with other cities throughout, and counties throughout California to, uh, get some support from our state legislature, uh, for more local control. To that end, uh, it's my understanding that both Councilwoman Fassinelli and I will be participating in the Sober Living Task Force that's been organized by the American Council of Cities, Orange County Chapter. And that'll be happening in a few days. We also addressed a couple of variance requests, and, uh, I'd like to take this opportunity to address, uh, something that may be developing as a bit of a concern, and hopefully the sentry can address this. In Villa Park, it's been my experience, and what I've heard from various contractors over the years, is that Villa Park is a really good place to do business. That our building and safety staff is very responsive, and, um, uh, they can get building permits, uh, quickly with a lot, without a lot of fuss. We've also got a good planning group, uh, so if you need a, a variance or whatever, that, uh, that can be, uh, processed for, fairly expeditiously. Uh, we even allow our city manager to make some minor approvals of variances. However, we've seen a, a couple of instances recently where, uh, uh, projects have been developed without building permits or without full, you know, their variances addressed and proceeded to construction, which has resulted in some, uh, significant expenses to, uh, the homeowners. Uh, one case where a structure had been demolished, uh, because it was, uh, encroached too far onto, uh, a, a setback and was impacting a neighbor who objected to that. So anyway, I'd like to, uh, remind the community, and hopefully the sentry could perhaps work with our city manager, to get a notice out to, uh, all the residents that although we're a really good place to do business, uh, in terms of, uh, development, and we really, as a city, I think, want to support our residents in making investments to improve our community, uh, we, uh, we do have to require that, uh, building permits be obtained prior to construction, that all variances and other approvals are obtained prior to construction. We will and we must, um, enforce those requirements to protect our community and also protect your neighbors. And that also people that are, uh, contemplating development of projects, that you work closely with your neighbors to make sure that, uh, you know, what you're proposing is not going to be impacting them, uh, so that we can have a harmonious and beautiful community and/or maintain a harmonious and beautiful community. So, and that's my report on the Community Development and Public Safety.
Any questions?
One thing I would add is I would do that, you know, for residents as well as contractors and everybody involved, because, you know, it, there's possibilities on the homeowner as well to, to ensure that they're following the, the process and reminding their contractors and people that come to work for them, you know, and not hiring people that aren't licensed, that don't, you know, don't follow proper procedures and things like that. So I see it's a, it's a dual thing, so bring awareness-
Yeah.
-not only to, to the people that do business here, but also the people that solicit people coming into town to do business for them.
Yeah, and also to, uh, you know, encourage our, our own residents not to press, um, their contractors to skirt the rules. Don Powell, who was our interim city manager earlier this year, uh, he had been interim city manager for our city, uh, a few years back, and there was one illegal fill that was accomplished. And my understanding is that, uh, the illegal fill created a public safety hazard and had to be removed, uh, at considerable expense to the homeowner. If you work with our building department and our, uh, our building official and our planning official, you can avoid a lot of headaches and a lot of future expenses and get a project done properly. So, um, again, we, we encourage folks to do that, and, you know, if the sentry could help us get the word out to everybody, and of course, uh, you know, if the, the developer community, when, when they come in applying for permits, uh, you know, they speak directly with Bill, and Bill put, uh, gives them the, you know, will tell them the, the right things to do and what our expectations are in our city.
I have one more favor to ask.
Comment, too.
Yes. Oh. On that subject, because I got a different subject.
No, that's on that subject. Um, we do get a listing of code enforcements, or code violations, and I haven't seen any increases, quite frankly, so if there has been, maybe they're missing from there, because the same amount's been on there. I also want to make a comment that I don't think it's the press's responsibility to notify anybody about anything except for what they want to write. So it's the city's responsibility, um, which is when people come in here and they apply for their permit, if we need to provide them with more literature, if we need to make them initial each page and understand it, it's our responsibility to do that. But if there has been an increase in code violations, I haven't been notified of it, unless you're getting a different list. And the staff reports that were provided for the Community Development and Public Safety, have those been scanned into the website so that the rest of the public, as well as the council, has the ability to see those? Because I haven't gotten them.
They have not. We're bringing up on the new, the new live webpage, we'll have those up, but we had, did not put them on the old page at this point, but they will be part of the new package that's going up on the 29th.
Okay. Can staff please provide the full council with those staff reports?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, one, one request for, uh, this group. Is it possible for us to get a presentation from the CERT team about what our efforts are in Villa Park as it relates to the CERT and what we're doing and membership and, you know, all the different initiatives that, that are going on? Is that possible to, to have Tom or whoever come in and give us a presentation on what's going on with CERT?
Uh, yes, we, that was actually a request that you had made several months back, so I've been trying to work with the, um, Mr. Dodge and trying to schedule something, and I would expect that to be in the next couple of meetings. I've asked him to come forward, but in expressing your interest.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further?
No.
If not, uh, Human Resources Committee.
Uh, good evening. Uh, the Human Resources Committee met on July 28th, and, uh, in principle, the agenda was, uh, about the Villa Park City Manager Evaluation Process, and we'll be talking further about that this evening, so, uh, I'm going to hold any further comments until then. Thank you.
Any questions? If not, uh, City Schools Advisory.
No meeting.
Uh, Law Enforcement Advisory.
No meeting.
Investment Advisory, no meeting. Villa Park Community Services Foundation.
Uh, we had a meeting, um, the day after council last month, and, uh, we have a new board chairman, his name is Ed Carter, for those of you who may not know that. Uh, and one of Ed's, uh, initiatives as the new board chairman was to, uh, he's very interested in Villa Park having a community services, um, building room property or something that we could all use as a, as a community services, uh, facility. So he's formed a committee. The committee is consisting of Pam Dunn, Crystal Miles, Ed Carter, and myself. And basically, what we're doing is looking at feasibility of having something here other than City Hall itself proper, um, and what that might look at, or look like. We, uh, we've also, uh, asked Steve and, and several other venues to help us publish, uh, the need for a potential architect that would come out and help us, you know, do a feasibility analysis and look at some potential designs on a pro bono basis. So if there's anyone that's living in the community that has an architectural background and would, uh, like to offer some support and some help with us to take a look at this and what might be feasible, you know, there's all kinds of different, everybody's got a lot of ideas about where we might do this, but where you can physically do it and support it is a whole different thing. So, um, if there are people out there that are, are listening tonight, or if we know of anybody, we certainly would appreciate them reaching out to Ed Carter and, and, and/or Steve, and letting them know that they might be interested in doing so. So we appreciate the help.
That's it.
That's it. Thank you. Uh, Friends of the Villa Park Library.
Um, I was not able to meet, but I did, uh, I had a conflict, but I do want to bring up that there is a fundraiser coming up on October the 19th. Invite everybody to, to come to that. It said, I'm going to butcher it, Young, Young Ching?
Young Chings.
Yes, Yunching. Alan Glacell. So, you know, we'll get more information out, I'll get more information to Steve, so that we can make everyone aware of what's going on. But please, if you have the opportunity to attend, I understand it was great fun last year, and we'll do the same thing again this year.
It's a tradition for the Friends of the Library to have a dinner at Young Chings. They've been doing it now for, you know, 25 years, if you will, 20 years. So they have really done a great job. It's $45 per person. You will not go away hungry. Um, if you have the time, it starts at 6:30, you will truly, truly enjoy yourself. They treat us like royalty when we do go there. They, they enjoyed having us there every year. So if you're interested in going, please just come in to City Hall, write a check, put your name down, or contact one of us. We'd love to have you.
Okay. Anything further?
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, members of the public may address the council on any off-agenda items within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the council, provided no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and 30 minutes for all comments. I don't have any comment cards, but does anyone from the audience like to speak?
I'd love to speak. I'm sorry, I didn't see the comment card. Greg Johnson's my name. My address is 10432 Center, Center Drive. Something's come to my attention, and it's very troubling. I think it's going to negatively impact our city, and I want you guys to be aware of it. City of Orange, which obviously is our neighbor, they fully encompass us, and should they pass an ordinance, um, have a policy or procedure, it has the potential to negatively impact us, and I think we have that right now. The City of Orange has a hands-off policy in regards to homelessness. And believe me, I'm the most compassionate person when it comes to homelessness. My family supports many different causes, but we don't need to invite them here. And what I'm seeing now, especially on the southwest corner of Tustin and, uh, Cattella, there's a commercial complex there. That's where the Norm's Restaurant and also the, uh, Carl's Jr.'s at. They had a real bad problem, and all of a sudden it disappeared. I noticed there was a security guard, so I stopped in, I spoke to him. The property owners and the business owners collectively decided they had had enough that the City of Orange, with their hands-off policy, couldn't help them. There were four or five different groups living there. The security company came in and these guys disappeared. So I said, "What's up? How do you do this?" He said, "Well, we just put pressure on them to either go east," which, guess what? That's towards us, "or go west." And I said, "Well, what happens if they don't want to leave?" "Well, we call the police." He said, "But they don't typically respond. And if they do, the best we can hope for is they just put them on the road, and if they have a lot of stuff, they go two doors down and just leave it there. As soon as PD leaves, they reappear, and the cycle continues." I think we need to do something to discourage any movement to the west. Now, I'm not too concerned about what's going on there, but that's a great visual right there. That aerial shot shows three or four large parcels to our east, one in the City of Orange, the old Sully Miller grinding facility, very similar to what you see over, which you're going to see as you walk along the river trails. Nice tabletop flat, lots of services available to them. And the last thing I want to see, and I think anyone else here, is an encampment on Cannon and Santiago, not Villa Park Road, because we already know the city has a policy of hands-off. Once they get there, they're not going to leave. Now, you'd say, "Okay, well, that's really known in the City of Villa Park," but it's in our frontier. There's two other parcels, one behind Oak Ridge School, that's in the unincorporated area of the county of Orange, and there's another one across the way. Both of them are kind of similar, except the one next to the school is down in a hole, so we're not going to see them as we drive by. They could still be there. They could still cause us some issues. And certainly, the property values will absolutely drop into the tank if a homeless encampment is absolutely in our city or in our sphere of influence. So you say, "Okay, well, what's the big deal here, Greg?" Well, the big deal to me is we have the ability to stop it today. With this body's help, we can probably annex both of those parcels, and now we take away from the City of Orange's influence and their lack of duty. We turn it over to the Sheriff Department, who've been protecting us in a fine way, and now if any encampment starts to happen, trespass words can be written, and we can have them relocated. So this is what I would like you guys to do. I'd like the whole council to get behind an annexation process, fast-track it as soon as possible, because if we don't and we wait, we run the risk that the City of Orange does it in front of us. And then what's going to happen? We already know. Their unofficial policy, do nothing with the homeless. We can have an encampment right there on that little island, or behind Oak Ridge School, or worse yet, in the City of Orange, which we already know they're not going to do anything about it. Please, give these gentlemen here the protection, or the tools, rather, to protect us, protect your families and protect ours. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
One question.
Please.
Could you tell me again where the two parcels are you're talking about?
Should I point them out?
Yes.
It's actually three.
Three, okay.
So the first one is the old Sully Miller grinding operation, which is right here on Santiago. And then this is Cannon that goes into Orange, I'm sorry, to Anaheim Hills. This area here is tabletop flat, plenty of cover in the back and water. Over here, behind Oak Ridge School, is another area. Now, this was taken probably in a rainy season. It's a great photo, but it doesn't look like this today. All through here and here, this is all in the county, the unincorporated area of the county. If we were able to annex this, then our Sheriff's Department would be having jurisdiction, and they're not going to put up with that. But right in through here, this area is very flat, it's very close to homes and neighbors. There's some walls back here that they would like to build a little canvas with. To answer your question, these are the two parcels.
All right. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is anyone else for public comment? If not, first public hearings. First hearing is review and weigh the reading of full of all ordinance's resolution on the agenda. Our staff, please give the staff report.
This is the regular waiver, basically, that we do to conduct the council meeting in expeditious and speedy fashion, so it's routine. So you'll see behind you, we're, our first attempt to try and get this posted. This is not the ideal screen. There is another screen, but it goes white to white. So we're still working through, this is the next step in trying to get something posted so that we can see that on the results of the vote. So when you vote this evening, this will screen behind you, and Tui and I will be working through it, but it is our next best effort to try and get something posted with votes.
Okay. All right. Councilmember, do you have any questions of staff? Is there someone in the audience to speak on this? If not, a councilmember, is there discussion regarding this item? If not, is there a motion on this matter?
So moved. I'll second.
Second. Moved in second, so please record your vote. Steve, would you read the results?
You can see the votes, 5-0.
5-0, okay.
But the individual council member's vote will show up in the, I don't want to say blue, purple, whatever you want to call it, depending on your color orientation, but that's how it'll show up, and we will improve that in the future.
Oh, thank you.
What have you colored by?
Huh?
Our next hearing is consideration of Resolution Number 2017-3401, a resolution to the City Council of the City of Villa Park declaring conditions present at 10101 Center Drive, Villa Park, California, to constitute a public nuisance. Staff, would you please give the staff report?
You'll recall, this was carried forward from our July meeting, actually, which was carried forward from the previous June meeting. This is the address 10101 Center Drive, where we've had a little bit of movement. The individual property owner showed up two meetings ago and indicated, but we, has been some movement, but not a lot. So the action tonight, we're going to recommend that we do declare it a, constitute a public nuisance. We would, the steps would follow is we would send him a note saying, "In 30 days, you have 30 days to clean this up. If you don't, the city will do it and charge him at their expense." We have solicited the input of the individual, and I believe he actually was here last meeting too, if I'm not mistaken, so I apologize. He was here both the June and July meetings. But we don't believe it fully represents a true, good-faith effort, and if you go by, you'd be able to see what I mean. The driveway is still undrivable and access, I'm not even sure how they access the front door. So from our perspective, we would still recommend approval of a public nuisance at this time.
How many complaints do we have of this?
We've had a number of complaints, and I think the concern here is that we've met and talked to the property owner and asked them to do things, and it just, it doesn't improve. So I've had, probably within the last month, I've had three complaints, asking if we're going to continue moving forward.
And have those complaints documented, because when we get to this point where we're looking at putting a, you know, a lien on someone's home in the future, we want to make sure that these complaints are not from one person, or that they're documented. I mean, the house I've seen, it has history. Two years ago, we had the neighborhood come in, quite frankly, on his defense, and we didn't do anything with it because of it. So I'm a little, I'm concerned, only because, you know, the home is on Center. It is a, everyone passes it. But we, I just, I don't think that we've had as many complaints to justify what we're going to do. I mean, we're going to go in and we're going to throw away half the stuff that's in that driveway. That's the only way you can clear that driveway. I mean, and that's, that's something I don't think that we've done in the past. We've gone in and we've cleaned shrubs, and we've cut down trees, and we've done it to several homes, but we haven't gone into someone's driveway and picked up plants and pots and stuff and chugged it. So I'm a little, just a little apprehensive to do that, because it's something new to us.
So I think, let me clarify. When somebody complains, we do document that complaint, but once that complaint is brought to our attention, staff then the code enforcement officer follows the code. So it doesn't rely as a number, I mean, you could have one complaint or a thousand complaints. If it violates code, it violates code, and I think that's what we're trying to do. We, and I also need to make it clear, we are not intending, nor do we want to move the property in any way, but for the last two and a half months, we've been asking to do something and received what we believe is minimal response and things. So we, our preference is exactly what you're saying. I do not want to have staff or anybody, I don't want to have a, you know, firm or anybody go in there and do that. My preference is we have voluntary cooperation, but we have yet to see that. And I think if we're going to continue to maintain the property standards in Villa Park, we at some point have to decide, we have to decide, okay, there's a limit. We've drawn the line in the sand, we backed up, we drew the line in the sand, we backed up. Well, at some point, we hit a wall, and I think we're hitting a wall at this point. So again, I appreciate exactly what you're saying. I really don't want staff or anybody to have to go clean this up. It's the property owner's responsibility, but when they don't have that response, you know, then there's a community responsibility that I represent, and that's a code. And so when the code says there's a certain requirements and they're not, that's where I draw the line, and that's why I'm coming forward recommending. Certainly, in no means are we trying to be intrusive of his rights as a property owner. In fact, we're encouraging them to exercise their rights and maintain the quality of what we have.
And he's been given multiple chances to do something. I mean, not just this time. I mean, we've been very lenient this time, but time before, it's time to step up.
And I certainly don't, again, I don't, I don't want us to. Our next step will not to take action ourselves. Our next step will contact them and say, "Okay, look, you really do, that line in the sand is real this time. Whether he chooses to believe it or not, we're moving forward." And again, the last thing I do is want to place a lien or something to do forward, because that's not, but I mean, it's, at some point, it doesn't become the other taxpayer's responsibility to maintain his property, and that's where we draw the line. So we are spending staff time trying to get cooperation, and we're trying to it, and that's something where I feel like we've kind of reached that point. So I'd recommend it. I appreciate what you're saying, and I totally agree with what you're saying. We don't want, we're very cautious.
It's something new for the city that, you know, it's not just cleanup. The one item I do want to talk about, though, is that it's not just dead and dying landscaping, it's inoperable vehicles, and that is not something that is true. And we've talked about it here. His vehicles are operable. We didn't, we kept telling him here that it was not a vehicle issue, and that's what's written here as an operable.
What we've encountered is a new vehicle there that's not there, and so we have different vehicles, so they kind of move in and out, and we have not checked for registration of some of the newest vehicles. So I went by there myself this morning, and there was a vehicle I had not seen before that did not look, I would say it's not in pristine shape, but that's not to mean it's not operable and it's not licensed and tagged, but that's, I think what we're trying to do is cover all bases here. And we would certainly only limit our comments to the driveway. If he cleans up the driveway, I'd be very satisfied to say, "You've done your thing." But I think at this point, I think we still have a problem. I agree with you.
It's just that we told him that we did not have a problem with the vehicles because the vehicles were operable, that, and I don't know how we can leave that in there if we, when we have no basis of knowing whether those were operable or not. They're in the driveway.
We could certainly strike that if you feel comfortable.
I'm just, I'm more comfortable with that. He does have a lot of cars there. I don't think we've done our due diligence there, and the rest, we've done our best to help him. But I don't agree with having the inoperable vehicles, because he's been here three times, and we've told him that that's not an issue. And we can go back to the record and listen to it. Has not been an issue. So if it becomes an issue in the future, that's a different complaint, but we should have brought it up and told him that he had to move the vehicles, we didn't.
At this point, we're supposed to be asking staff questions. I'd like to hold discussion for a little later, after we've had public input, if any. So is there any more questions from staff? If not, is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question.
Oh, okay.
Steve, correct me if I'm wrong. Councilman Pitts, and I thought it was a good suggestion, mentioned that we should provide him with a punch list of sorts, and, correct me if I'm wrong, he was provided with that. And, you know, he's given written documentation of the things that were wrong with his property and has had multiple opportunities to correct those and has not fulfilled upon those, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing further.
One question. We discussed this a few weeks ago, and I believe we brought up the, I brought up the inoperable vehicle issue, and I understand at that time that the, at least one of the vehicles was not currently registered.
I think at the time, that vehicle's no longer there. So I think all the vehicles that we are aware of at the time, like I think Councilwoman Passanelli says, it's been sort of a thing. Some of them are, we've actually even lifted up the tarps on some of them and found that they are registered and tagged. You know, we haven't gone on a daily basis to check in on them and see what's operable today or anything like that, but I'd be comfortable if the council wanted to remove that inoperable element off that, we certainly would do that, because I don't think that's primarily the problem. The problem is the driveway, in essence, and we believe that there needs to be, and we've told them that. You're right. The councilwoman's correct.
Any further questions?
Nothing further. Thank you.
If not, is there anyone from the public to speak at this hearing? If so, please step to the podium. Seeing no one, we'll bring you back to the council for discussion. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Do I hear a motion on this matter?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved in second, so please record your vote.
I have a substitute motion.
Okay.
Substitute motion is to remove the inoperable vehicles based as it stands, but remove inoperable vehicles, because that is not what we gave him warning for. He came here, we told him that the vehicles were not an issue to be moved. He was being brought because there was a vegetation issue.
Motion, wasn't it?
His punch list didn't include inoperable vehicles. Okay, that was, and I asked for this to be removed last time, because that wasn't the issue. And so, quite frankly, what are you going to do? Go in there and get Auto Club in there to see if the cars are moving? You, right now, our own staff has said, "There's cars moving back and forth." Okay? The man has a lot of cars. It's not against our municipal code to have a lot of cars, and they're moving.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I appreciate the councilwoman's comments, and if I could clarify the motion. My motion is to accept what Steve has clarified, which is to strike that element or that aspect of, and in a sense, we're agreeing.
We'll remove item number two.
Yeah. If you're good with that, if staff's good with that, I don't see an issue. I think we can still accomplish what we're trying to accomplish without digging too far into the weeds, so to speak. So.
Now, what is the motion? Is it due staff recommendation?
Except for the vehicles.
Except for the vehicles. Is that all right with the second?
Yes.
Do you still want to make a substitute motion?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. Well, record your vote then. Give us the results, Steve.
That is a 5-0 vote, as you can see.
Okay.
Behind you.
Consent calendar. We will now consider the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion, approved and recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion of separate action. Councilmember, are there any items you'd like to remove from the consent calendar? Is there any the staff like to remove?
No.
Any public would like to remove? So if not, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved. I'll second.
Moved in second. Please record your vote.
That passes by a 5-0 vote.
One comment, if it's okay?
Sure.
I read the minutes. Excellent job. Thank you. Whoever did the minutes did a great job this time of being more detailed and captured, I think, the spirit and the discussion points that came out in the council meeting, so thank you. We still have a ways to go with our committee meetings, but the council meeting was, those are good. Thank you.
All right. Under new business, our first item of new business is a memorandum of understanding for evaluation of Orange County Sheriff's contract law enforcement services. Staff, please give the staff report.
Item number nine is an item that has come up, a fellow contract. There are 13 cities that contract for sheriff law enforcement services, and one of, several of the cities, primarily South County-based, have said it's been quite some time since there was an assessment of the financial tracking, basically, if you will, how contract charges are charged to the various cities. The situation has been so that it's prompted this, is that over probably the last five years, there's been probably a 20 to 25, maybe even higher percent increase for many of these cities in their law enforcement costs. While much of these costs are uncontrollable, I think the effort is to try and look at this and sort of, if you will, look under the hood to see why those costs are going up, and if there's anything to be done to mediate those, because eventually that becomes very problematic. It is probably the single largest expense in our operation budget, and it is something that merits it. So, what the various city managers, my counterparts, and has come up with, and they approached and asked to include us, the 13 contract cities would hire a consultant to look at the, an independent consultant that is not of the employee of either the cities or the county, and look at the process, look at the contracting, and look at the charges that are made. The city of Mission Viejo has volunteered to go out and handle the RFP, and would also hire a project manager to sort of handle this. The cities have approached the sheriff and the CEO of the county. Both Frank Kim and Sheriff Hutchins have agreed that this is a good thing to do, and they're supportive of it. So, basically, what the idea is, it's a $300,000 contract that they're asking for, and they would split the cost proportionally. Us Villa Park being such a large portion has constituted our, our share of that 300,000 is about $2,700. So, and the saying goes, I guess, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu, and I don't think that we want to be on the menu, we want to have an opportunity to have a voice at the table and discuss. There are a couple issues that I would personally, and I'm very familiar with how the contracting is done in the county, so I have some questions just about making sure that Villa Park gets only its fair share and nothing more, and I think that the sheriff would agree that every city wants. The, the model is important for us, and one of the things I've stipulated is, this is no, this is by no intent, while we're checking under hood, this is no desire to buy a new car, a new make or new model, this is simply to make sure that everything's running right under the hood from my perspective, and I've communicated that to my fellow partners. So, Michelle and I have attended meetings. We will be vigorously engaged if the council would approve tonight, but we believe the study would be done and completed, not in time for our next budget, but probably in time for the, I want to say, is that 18, 19?
Yeah.
18, 19 budget. So, again, I think this is something that's prudent to do, and something that makes sense, and much like we would do with any contractor at some point, look at what our charges are and how we're getting there. So, again, we're very satisfied, and we'll have to say, we get some of the finest law enforcement services, and we have great, you know, we have very good reports as a result. I just think that it's, you know, it's an administrative issue, and from a good business perspective, we just need to make sure we're doing it and being charged the right way. So, the MOU is basically going to all 13 contract cities by September 19th. Mission Viejo, assuming those that will approve, will be all, will take up the matter on September 26th, and they'll move forward and start the RFP process. So, we, all we get by this is a bill for 2,600, $2,700, where we have the opportunity to participate, watch what's going on, hear the results, and make sure that any formulaic changes, at least we have a say-so, or at least know what's coming, as opposed to seeing it hit our budget. So, I think it's a good thing to do, and I'd recommend approval.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff?
No.
No questions? Is there anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? If not, bring back to the council any further discussion, any discussion? If not, do I hear a motion?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Been moved and second, record your vote.
That passes by a 5-0 vote.
Okay. Next new business, item of new business, Villa Park City Manager's Evaluation Process. Councilman Rossini, as Chair of the Human Resource Committee, may you give the staff report?
Be honored to, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The contract for the current city manager requires an annual performance evaluation by the, by the city council once a year on or before his anniversary date. In this case, it's his anniversary date, which is March 8th. In order to formalize the process to be used going forward, the Human Resources Committee has met and developed a recommended evaluation process, found in attachment one, including a proposed form to gather input, which is found in attachment two, for consideration by the full city council. The recommended processes, excuse me, recommended process includes the following components: preparation by the city manager of a self-assessment report, city council input on an input form to be completed by each city council member, preliminary consolidated input forms compiled by the city attorney, and closed session discussions by the city council, first the city council only, and then jointly by the city manager subsequently, and then a written summary of the council's discussion. The recommended process will be conducted in accordance with the following schedule: January each year, February each year, and in January, the Human Resources Committee will distribute a memo outlining the process and timeframe. The city manager submits a self-assessment report, and then in February, city council members complete an input form and submit a city, to the city attorney. The city attorney consolidates input from individual council members, council meets in closed sessions, the mayor writes a summary of the council consensus and agenda, and agendases any reportable action for the next regular city council meeting. In order to make the evaluation as meaningful as possible, specific goals need to be established for the city manager. The Human Resources Committee is recommending that the city council adopt the goals that were approved as part of the fiscal year 2017 and 2018 city budget, which is found in attachment three. This would set the goals for the city manager consistent with the allocation of financial resources by the city council as part of the annual budget process. The fiscal impact, there will be no specific fiscal impact as a result of adopting the recommended evaluation process and input form. The costs associated with the adoption and pursuit of the fiscal year 2017 and 2018 goals have been incorporated into the fiscal year 2017 and 2018 city budget. The recommendation is that the city council adopt the recommended draft city manager evaluation process and draft council member input form to be implemented immediately, and to adopt the proposed city manager goals for fiscal year 2017, 2018, and the following attachments are found in the matters before the city council. Thank you.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions of councilmember Rossini?
Yes, I do. Who wrote this document?
That was a combination of the city, excuse me, the mayor, as well as input from myself, and obviously, my city manager.
Steve, how much of this document did you write?
Which document are you referring to?
This, I mean, I've got, I've got a bunch of different types, so it appears that the first one that has new business agenda item is the normal type that our city uses, but then when I look at the attachments, that doesn't look like our normal type of forms.
The staff report was drafted, I drafted that.
Okay.
The Human Resources Committee, Mayor Nelson, and Councilman Rossini drafted the process and put together the format.
Okay.
I think that's fair representation.
I think that it's fair to, we have an evaluation process for our city manager, he's certainly a contracted employee, and if we ever had an issue with, with him, we would write him a check and put you on your way. It's just kind of how it works, but I appreciate that we have to have this process, but to have an evaluation process with a document that's been written by two council members is discriminatory. So, the council members aren't responsible for writing documents, we're elected officials. We have tools available to us, I think that we need to go out to an agency, and there are a lot of agencies out there, those forms are done, tell them that we want an evaluation process, and we want, you know, 52 questions like this, and have an independent person provide us with the form, but to give our city manager or any employee an evaluation process that's written by two council members is discriminatory. I certainly wouldn't want it, I'd walk away from that job. I would, quite frankly, if anything ever happened, bring legal action against us. It's, it's just wrong. You have five council members here, I don't know, we're not in the business of writing the documents, so the questions that are written here are, quite frankly, I look at them, they're juvenile, they're not professional questions, they, they are very one-sided, everything, I've got, the mayor's name is here, and he's signing documents and making a lot of decisions, and, and once again, we don't have an elected mayor, it's not how we work. So, my suggestion is that this be rejected, and that we go out to a firm that is versed in city human resources, and purchase a personnel packet from them, and use that as their evaluate, as our evaluation for our city manager. And secondly, you mentioned something, Councilman Rossini, that the goals, that the city manager is responsible for the goals in our budget. Unfortunately, he does need to do that, but he takes his direction from the council, so if we all of a sudden decide that we want to spend, you know, half a million dollars on, you know, new chairs, and the majority says, yes, he has to do that, and that would, he would not meet the goal that's in there, so I just want to make that clarification. He can only do what we tell him to do, and if we decide to change our mind on the goals, it doesn't work. So, I would like to reject this and direct the staff to go out to a professional firm and provide us with an evaluation packet for our staff, as well as our city manager, so that it is not discriminatory.
Is anyone else on the council have questions, Councilmember Rossini? If not, is anyone from the public that would like to speak on this? Not, I'll bring back to the council for discussion. If there's no discussion, do I hear a motion on this?
Before you do, I had a chance to review the document, and I've personally taken part in 360 evaluations, and also, performance evaluations at various levels within organizations. I don't disagree with having performance evaluations of your employees, things like that. What I was concerned about was the way these, the way the questions were worded. The questions were worded in a fashion that seemed to appease the individual council member and not us as a whole group, and it's all in how you ask the question. I realize that each one of us are given our individual, but it's really how the city manager serves the community, serves the council as a whole, but I find a lot of these is, the questions that, that are asked in the original form are more pointed towards individuals, as opposed to how he treats the body as a whole, and I think, I think we're deficient. You know, I agree with her, I think we ought to go and look at other, because I pulled, I have 12 different examples of performance evaluations that I went and researched, and I find them a little bit more in line with what I'm used to in the past, and what I've seen human resources departments put out in very large and very small organizations. So, I do agree with her in that I think we ought to take a look at other options, as opposed to, so that we don't have liability, so that we don't, you know, versus just taking something that we've, you know, combined and put together, and have an opportunity to be challenged at some point down the road.
For your information, Councilmember Pitts, those questions were taken from a document that was recommended by the League of Cities. I see you have that document there, these are their recommended questions.
No, because I compared them, so they're not.
No, in one, one of their forms, they did recommend these questions, that's where it was taken from.
And the other thing that we're missing, I think, here in this, which I'm also used to, is a personal development plan. I don't see any existence of a personal development plan in here at all for Steve. So, let's say we go through the evaluation, we write up the report, it's given to him, what steps does he take from that point to, to make changes or improvements in what he's doing to satisfy, to get, to go from a one to a five? Nowhere in here in this document do we have a personal development plan for the city manager to, to help him with improvement, and every employee or whatever. And the other thing, I go back to the last council meeting, it's not up to us to manage, it's up to us to set policy, and the city manager manages. Once again, I feel like with all of this, we're, we're back in the management mode again, we're not setting policy. So, I would ask, I would ask, not saying, throw the whole thing out, I appreciate the work that you all have done, I appreciate the fact that you did research and went and looked at others, I would just like for us to have some discussion about a different set of questions, and if it's possible, go outside and get a professional firm that's outside of this council, that can give us the things that we need, the performance evaluation, the input documents, and also the performance improvement plan, or the personal develop, I like to call it a personal development plan. So, that's, that's my question to ask in response.
Any further discussion?
None.
If not, do I hear a motion on this issue?
I'd go ahead and move that.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So, record your vote.
I make a substitute motion.
Yes.
Substitute motion is to not adopt this, and to advise staff to go out to a professional human resource firm that is equipped with the ability to write an evaluation for cities, and bring it back to this council within the next 60 days.
Second.
You second?
Yes, sir.
So, record your vote.
To be clear, we're voting on the substitute motion.
We're voting on the substitute motion.
Correct.
That to not accept this.
Can I hear from the, from the citizens?
I think she wants to say something.
Yes.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Oh, great.
Of course you can.
Wait, we're in the middle of a vote, aren't we?
We're in the middle of a vote.
We're in the middle of a vote, we can't.
We voted.
You told us to vote.
I said we voted.
Here we go again, I didn't vote again.
No, hold on.
Cancelled, we can, can we rescind the vote? You can rescind the vote at this point, if the council. To the mayor's discretion of when, until votes finalize, to allow public comment, so this is.
Well, I'd, I'd rather.
But half of us have voted.
I'd rather go ahead and vote on this motion, and then we can have discussion after that.
Do we vote now?
Yes.
Okay, Steve, this isn't working out, again, because half of us have voted, and we continued to talk, and what's, I'm a little lost, so.
We, I called for the vote, and she wanted to make a public comment, but I'm saying we're not interrupting the vote for public comment. The attorney said, well, I have that privilege. So, have everyone voted?
Yes.
What's the vote, Steve?
The vote is, I, yes, and two, three, no. Motion fails.
Motion fails. So, if you'd like to make a public comment now, you can.
That's, that's one of my concerns is Karen Goldberg, and I have a little bit of concern about the work that's being done here by the council.
Karen, can we have your name again and your address, please?
Yes, it's Karen Goldberg.
She said her name, Mr. Rossini.
I couldn't quite hear her, and I didn't hear her address.
And she doesn't need to say her address, Mr. Rossini.
Karen Goldberg, and I'm a citizen, I'm a resident here in Villa Park.
Thank you.
I, that's what I'm just a little concerned, and I'm hearing a little bit of, the reason why I'm concerned, and what brought me here tonight, just by listening to you guys right now, I just, I'm, I'm new at this, I don't really understand how the website works very well, so I can't really, the questions I have right now will help me answer, ask my question, but right, how many committees do we have in, for the city of Villa Park that the council members are, are a part of? I know we have the Human Resource Committee, the Community Development Committee, a Public Safety, Investment Advisory Committee, Villa Park Law Enforcement Advisory Committee, Human Resource Committee, I think I said that one, and am I missing any?
The Infrastructure Management Committee.
Okay, how many committees is that total?
I think that's six.
Six, okay, because when I went online to find out who was on all the committees, you know, all are elected, wonderful elected officials who have given, you know, have given, that give up a lot of their time to be on these committees. I was trying to find out who is on what committee, and I see Human Resources Rossini and Bill Nelson, is that correct? Can you kind of go over the who's on what committees for me?
What we're, what we're talking about is the city manager's performance evaluation, not committees.
Oh, I know that, but it kind of leads, you know, your discussion kind of leads me into my, my comment for, for tonight. Can I?
Well, you've already indicated who's on the Human Resource Committee.
Well, is it, is it Vince and Bill Nelson? And, because I tried finding it on, online, and I couldn't, and then the public, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, Community Development is Councilmember Rossini and Colacut, is that correct?
Yes.
And then the Investment Advisory Committee is Bill Nelson, Bob Colacut?
Yes, and there are a number of public members as well.
Yeah, public, but no others, other.
No other, correct.
This is the law enforcement, that would be Colacut and Rossini?
That's correct.
And then Human Resource is Rossini and Nelson?
That's correct.
And then what is the one that I did not?
Infrastructure Management this evening was appointment of, was proved in consent calendar, that would be Mayor Protam, Colacut, and Councilman Rossini.
Rossini, okay. So, I'm looking at this, and I'm going, whoa, as a voting resident, and I'm thinking, boy, we have five, we have five city council members here, and six committees, and only two or three council members are part of that whole, are part, are on any kind of council. And this doesn't make sense to me. This, I mean, that's a lot of work for only two or three people.
First off, first off, you're going to have to get to the city manager evaluation eventually, because that's what we're talking about here, we're not talking about city committees.
I know, I.
If you, you either have to get to your point, or you have to.
Okay, well, I'm getting to the point, is that there's a lot of work to be done at this city.
You have, you have to get to the city manager evaluation, that's what the topic.
That's what I'm talking about, you'll all get there.
You need, you need to get to that.
Okay, well, there's a lot of work that needs to be done by the city council members. There's, we, we voted for five city council members, and in, and here, it looks like only three are carrying the load.
You're not talking, you're not, you're not talking.
Well, no, what he was discussing is that.
I would respectfully ask you to leave. I would respectfully ask you to leave the forum, because you're not talking about this.
But when you talk about an evaluation, I think Pitts and Fasenelli, I think they seem like they didn't have any kind of understanding of what went into the, well, not understanding, but that were part of any kind of evaluation. And to me, I think that the evaluation should be looked at by all council members. And we voted, the city of Villa Park voted for five council members, and when I see this, and I'm hearing this, it seems like only two or three are doing the work. That doesn't seem really fair, that doesn't seem in consist, in alignment with the voters' willing, the voters' understanding of, they voted for five council members. Five council members should be on, they should share the load of the work. It's very unfair that only two or three are doing a lot of the work and bringing it to a vote. That doesn't make any sense, we have five council members here. And I think, as a citizen, I'm concerned, I think the councils, all council members should be a part of a committee. And in Villa Park, it seems like there's only two or three council members that are part of committees. Why is that? How come all the, I mean, if you go to any other city, most, you go to the senate, you go to the state, all the representatives are part of some committee. How come we only have two or three that are on the committees? And I'm finding that some of the people that are on the committees, they have kind of canceled a couple of meetings. I've looked for a meeting that I wanted to come to and it was canceled, and you know, that happens all the time, you know, people coming in and have other things to do, understandable. But I'm thinking, it's leading up to that maybe this is too much workload for only two or three council members. That's why I think that we have in Villa Park, we wanted five council members, and we voted for five council members to do, to bring together, to bring, to do the work and to, to bring out input from all council members, because all voters voted on these council members. So my thing is, if we only have two or three doing all the work, that's really not fair. The other two should be on committees to help, help the burden or the workload. The workload is looking like it's too much for just two or three council members, which is exactly what it is, that's why we have five council members. If it wasn't too much, we'd only have three, we'd only would have voted three for the city of Villa Park. So that's my only comment, is that I'm seeing that a lot of work is not really getting done correctly, because I think it's too much workload for two or three council members. So I think the city of Villa Park needs to look at the council members, how many council members should be, that each council member should carry their own, an equal workload, is what I'm saying.
Thank you. We're back to the main motion, so would you please record your vote on the main motion, that's accepted recommendation.
Wait a minute. Reset? This needs to be cleared. Still showing.
That failed.
That's weird, that one.
Yeah.
That was the two, three, that was the original motion by.
The substitute.
Councilwoman Fasenelli.
I don't know if it's a substitute.
That was a substitute motion, now we're going back to the original motion, which was, want to repeat, does the maker of the motion like to repeat that?
The approval of Agenda Item 10, the subject Villa Park City Manager Evaluation Process and Attachments 1, 2, and 3, the forms and the goals.
So we need a second.
Are we ready?
I second it.
You have a second.
Can I make an amended motion?
No, we're voting on this one now.
Excuse me, I'd like to make, I want to make an amended motion, and I'm allowed to, procedurally I can.
Okay.
The city attorney says.
That the motion be accepted as written with the notation that the document was written by Councilwoman Rossini and the current Mayor Nelson, that the document was not written by the city manager, and that needs to be in there, and that's my motion, as it is, but with the notation of the author of the document.
Do you have a second? If not, motion fails for the lack of a second. Back to the main motion, again. So please record your vote on the main.
Did it clear up?
This is the main.
What is it, tell me what the name of the motion, can you please?
The main motion is, the motion that's in the presented staff report, as it's just been repeated to me, was that adopted the draft city manager evaluation process and the draft council member input form to be implemented immediately, and number two, adopt the proposed city manager goals for 2017, 2018. So those, that's the original as recommend, as put forth in the staff report.
Record the vote, Steve?
What's her end, that passes, three to two?
Motion passes.
I'd like to make a comment, Mayor Nelson, for the future, you need to kindly take a breath and make sure that we're prepared to take the vote. It appears you're jumping the gun to allow us to take the vote. We've had a couple mistakes already tonight, we had several mistakes last time, if you would kindly wait and allow everybody to be prepared, so they can push the button at the same time, so this does not happen again.
Our next, the last item in our new business, engineering design services Mesa Henderson Storm Drain Replacement Project contract award. Staff, please give the staff report.
As you're aware, we're moving forward into Mesa Henderson Storm Drain on several fronts, one is working with FEMA regarding reimbursement and CJPIA with the insurance as well. Secondly, we are working through a process now to award a contract for, or go out with RFP for design, consistent with the requirement that FEMA puts forth that everything be competitively bid. We did put the bid out, the number of firms were solicited, we did receive four responsive bids. The bid came in initially, this is not a low bid contract, because it's not a public works contract, this is a professional services contract, so the council has the discretion of providing, recommending anything. The, one of the things that, when they came back, we recommended that all four of the responsive bidders were in fact responsive and qualified, so our next step was we recommended the lowest bid, we looked at initial lowest bid. As it turns out, when it was brought to my attention that the lowest bid was in fact the firm that also we contract with for our city engineering, I was uncomfortable with that and consulted, and in an effort to avoid the perception or reality of any perceived or any real conflict of interest, I'm recommending that we go with the second lowest expense firm, which is, we sent out an addendum, that's with CNC Engineering, and that would be a $48,890 contract for design. It's about $4,000 more expensive than the civil source, but I don't believe that $4,000 is something that should delay the process, and I believe it's inconsequential, if we were to go out to ask for a separate evaluation firm or something, we'd probably spend that much time or effort. So I feel that we can move forward on CNC and let the contract. So today I'm recommending that you'll see an alternate recommendation that was put out in an addendum, with revised, again, which is CNC, and we move forward with that contract for $48,890.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions or stuff? If not, is anyone from the public like to speak on this item? Now I'll bring it back to the council for discussion, is any discussion? No discussion, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, this is for the word to CNC? Yes. Yes, I'll second that.
So they're moved in second, please record your vote.
So we have a 5-0 vote passed.
5-0 vote. Next we have the city manager report. Steve, could please, I'll give you a report.
As we do every month, I provide a list of the projects, and the list continues to grow, thank you. The notices in red indicate any changes or status changes from the prior month, so those have been highlighted. We continue, as items are completed, you'll see status that actually says completed for those items. The list continues to grow, much of it through council initiation, we have very active council, but we also have some external forces that are asking us and pushing us to do various and sundry projects. So staff and myself are available to answer any questions, an effort to move forward, I would defer to the council.
Any questions, the city manager? Well, thank you for that report, Steve. Now we, time to hear individual council member information item, starting with Councilmember Fasenelli.
Okay. The, in July, I can't remember the exact date, the Orange County Fair Business Development hosted all the Orange County cities at their fairgrounds, and which at that time we were able to visit Heroes Hall, which is a wonderful place to go if you want to see Orange County history, and when it comes to our veterans, it's a place where you have had families donate items that have come from all over the country and have, people have graciously given their story, so that we could go to a place and learn about the history and learn about the people who live in Orange County. And they, I went there with Councilman Pitts and his wife, and my, my husband, and it was quite moving, the entire council was invited, I hope make sure that they can go and actually visit it with us, it would be great, but we certainly thank the Fair Development Department for doing that. I think I did mention that I did go on an aerial tour of the county on Monday, and what the Phase Two is planned, which is this Thursday, is that the city manager and myself, and I've invited Councilman Pitts to come, are going to go on the tour of the Riverbed, the Civic Center, as well as another homeless shelter, I think it's the Kramer site, if I'm correct. And the reason for this is certainly because there is a homeless issue or urban encampment issue, whatever we want to call it. And we have a great city right now, we do not have a problem with it, and we don't have a problem with it, because it's got great law enforcement, hate to say it, and we move them along, we also don't have any services to provide them also. So we don't get a lot of people here, because we don't have any services for them. But it is growing, and we do see more and more vagrants, if you will, coming through the city. School is starting, you know, we do have a civic center, we don't want our civic center to turn into what the city of Tustin turned into about a month ago, which, you know, they had full-size beds in front of their civic center. So in doing this, our own county has provided $700,000 for people to go out and assist the encampment. Well, that $700,000 comes from our taxes. If, quite frankly, if the board of supervisors continues to spend that kind of money, they're gonna want to get that money from somewhere, whether it's cities or assessments. So it's something that we need to make sure that we have a handle on it and we see what's out there. So we'll report back on that when I come back at the next council meeting. August 18th, there was a concert in the park given by our Villa Park Community Services Foundation, we had a Johnny Cash impersonator, it was a very lovely evening, we must have had about 400 people there, the music was good. We also had a vagrant who came to visit also that evening, that everyone saw who happened to be drinking and who fell asleep on the stage. So it was a real eye-opener for a lot of people that people do travel, they do travel, and our sheriff's department was very, you know, very good, I called them, they were there in about five or six minutes and carted him off to where he belongs and.
In mass, too, and quantities, I might add.
It was good, yeah, they came quickly, how's that? I attended Serrano Waters Board Meeting, just so everyone knows, they do have a security guard that walks around Irvine Lake, because Serrano Waters is our water district, they do walk around the lake to make sure that there aren't any vagrants or any trespassers that come in, and they continue to do that. They've acknowledged our city has done such a great job in conserving water, but they're also reminding us that the drought restrictions have been lifted, and they're welcoming us to turn on our water and water our lawns and water our plants, so just want to make sure that everybody's, it's okay if you take a little longer shower, if you'd like to. I attended OUSD's Board Meeting on August 17th. This was a very important board meeting, it was their first assessment to the public when it came to the bond. They had a very informative presentation, that presentation is on OUSD's website, it'll show you what they've done, what their progress is, what their plans are, and the first Oversight Committee meeting for the bond, actually it's our second Oversight Committee for the bond, is on September 6th. I am the chairman of that committee, and welcome anybody who wants to come, to please come, and at that time, we'll be presented with what funds have been expended so far when it comes to any bond proceeds, once the bond is issued. Just to give anybody an idea, we're looking at a bond being issued sometime within a year, but it'd be about a year before a bond's issued on that, so if people ask that question, you have the answer. School starts tomorrow, so I welcome back all the students, the teachers, the parents, and the city will be bubbling again, our town center will be lively. We did have the seventh curator start today, and tomorrow everyone starts, so please welcome all the kids, drive slowly for a few days, we do have new parents, we have kindergartners, you know, who are not used to driving their kids to school, and I just want to make sure everybody has a, you know, a safe first stay there. And as far as that goes, let's see what else I have. One issue I just want to bring up is, and I mentioned it to the city manager, Republic Services is our trash provider. And with that and our contract, it states that if you do purchase a bin, you need to purchase it from Republic Services, it cannot be purchased from another vendor. It's in our contract, and lately we do have a lot of construction going around the city, and there has been an issue with people using other vendors. The city is out looking for that, because we don't want our contractor to say that we're null and void in our particular responsibilities, so it's just something, sometimes we have to remind people they don't know. You know, the contractor should know, but sometimes individual people don't know. So if you do need to get a dumpster, make sure you get it from Republic, and if you have any questions, certainly ask the city manager for that. We have a few items coming up, a Friends of the Library Dinner, a flu clinic is coming up on October 25th. Once again, this will be the third time that I'll be presenting it with the Orange County Health Department, I guess, is who brings it over, so we do have that on October 25th, it's going to be from 3:00 to 7:00. And also on October 17th at 6:30, I have a water forum with Metropolitan Water District Larry Dick hosting it. And this will be an informative, if you will, seminar about where our water comes from. So Larry Dick is quite knowledgeable, he's been with the water district quite some time, this isn't something about how much we pay for our water, but more so a history of where our water comes from, and that question's been asked a lot, we think Serrano Waters our water district, we see the dam, but this is going to be a history of where it comes from and give us an idea of where we're at with the drought restrictions and the aqueducts and what's coming up through the path. So that will be on October 17th at 6:30, and we'll certainly be getting that out on the network. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that report, Councilmember Pitts?
I too attended the OC Fair with Deanna and Fred, and we also had the opportunity to have dinner with Stephen Choi and John Murlock, it was a great evening of fellowship, the food was amazing. The whole evening was just very, very well done, and it gave us all a chance to collaborate and talk and get to know each other, and also to learn many things about what cities are doing and so forth. I also attended the National Night Out Event here in Villa Park. I was a little worried at first with all the lightning and thunder and rain and so forth, but it kind of went away and people started coming out, so that was good. Many thanks to our Orange County Sheriff friends and all of our partners here, the foundation, Rotary Group, and others who were in support of the event with the food, fun, and also the educational awareness, we really do appreciate that. Also attended the foundation concert in the park, tribute to Johnny Cash. I think Jill has found her pledge of allegiance guy, because I seem to get nominated due to pledge allegiance to every one of these, so I look forward to it now. A couple of infomercials, back to school is here upon us. All residents should be aware of the parking rules that exist around our school zones. If we don't park correctly, we can create unsafe zones for our children, you know, and, you know, we're going to have a, one of these days, if we're not careful, someone's going to park in the wrong place and we're going to hit a child. So, you know, the curbs are marked, you're not supposed to park within 30 feet of a stop sign, so I encourage everyone to follow the parking rules around the schools. I ask the sheriff to make sure that, you know, we are patrolling both sides of the city when school goes in and not selective and working one side of the city, not saying that we've been doing that, but I see, I don't see very many tickets given to people on the Villa Park Elementary side of town, so. And also I'd hope that, you know, especially our city employees and people have to manage the school zone speed limits as well. I understand that some of our PSRs have been speeding in the community, so I ask that those people be very cognizant of school zones, and just because they're in a public vehicle, that they maintain a safe, safe speed limit. There's a couple of things that I want to go on record tonight to, and bring up to the council. First of all, I want to go on the record, last week, I mean, last month, when we had the vote for the Infrastructure Committee, there seemed to be a lot of confusion. the vote for the Infrastructure Committee, there seemed to be a lot of confusion, there was confusion tonight as well, and I didn't vote. And so, for the record, it said that I abstained, I did not abstain. I was going to vote no, and I wanted to be put on the record that my vote was a no for the Infrastructure Committee. And then last but not least, to the young lady's point who got up earlier, you struck a chord with me, and I may have not realized as much as you pointed out and brought up, but I feel like, you know, the process that we're going through to pick committees and stuff like that within Villa Park has almost created an atmosphere of censorship for Diana and I. Bill and Vince and Bob are sitting on all of the committees that are involved in the city operation. And not that I want to manage anything, but part of the thing, the reason I ran for the city was to learn city inner workings. But, you know, I'm seen to be stuffed out on the peripheral and only given the opportunity to provide input in this setting, but yet my vote means nothing. And to her point, I was elected by a group of people in this city, and I just want to make it known that I feel like I'm being censored and don't feel like it's fair. And I, you know, my background, my experience and everything else is something that should be considered, and the points of view of the people that voted for me. So I just want to go on the record that I feel like I'm being censored, I can't speak for other council members, but we need to be cognizant of that in the future, because every time there's a new committee, it's one of these three people on the right. And the two on the left are just told to be quiet and sit in the corner, like they're little children. So, thank you, thank you for your input tonight, I appreciate it, struck a chord with me, and I appreciate you stepping up and saying what you did, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Racini?
Well, I just want to thank everybody for listening and coming out this evening. I'd like to thank city staff for the tireless work that they've been doing, council members, community volunteers. As previously discussed, I attended the Human Resources Committee meeting on July 28th and the Community Development Public Safety Committee meeting, excuse me, on August 14th. But I also had the opportunity, and an impromptu opportunity, to assist the Villa Park High School softball booster club president in helping tend to some of the fields. And I just want to take my time tonight and send a special thanks out to Robert Harvey, who's a community volunteer, sounds like a very selfless man who put his time and effort into making a program that is fantastic for this community and for young ladies outside of this community. And I just want to say thank you to him, and want to thank the mayor for his assistance in the Human Resource Committee. I think that we're in league with the California League of Cities, and I think that we came up with an excellent proposal, and I look forward to future meetings of the Human Resource Committee. And I'd also like to give special thanks to many other volunteers within our community. There are so many that go unnamed and unspoken of, and each and every one of you have an opportunity to make this committee, excuse me, this community better. We have the opportunity with the Infrastructure Management Advisory Committee to improve some of our streets and enhance the values of the properties and save taxpayers money. And if you have a civil engineering background, please volunteer, I think that it's going to be a great committee and it's gonna really benefit our community. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Colacar?
Yes, in July I attended the Orange County Strategic Plan for Aging, the senior, I'm participating on the Senior Transportation Subcommittee. And this group will meet quarterly to identify top transportation needs for our seniors and to explore innovative options. At our July 26th meeting, we reviewed the transportation program that's provided by a nonprofit group in San Diego County, and this is a potential model for a public-private partnership arrangement for inclusion in our Orange County senior transportation offerings. On August 16th through 18th, I attended the Urban Water Institute Annual Water Conference, and at this conference, presentations were made on statewide water supply issues. And interestingly, this included a presentation on a system to more effectively monitor and manage local sanitary sewer systems. And of course, the city of Villa Park operates and maintains our own sanitary sewer system, and my understanding from staff is that we have some challenges there. And anyway, I'm going to forward this information on to staff so that they can further evaluate and determine if there are any elements of that that can be included in our system management program. Let's see, I also attended the National Night Out, and I guess that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Well, I have just one item, I attended the League of Cities Orange County Division meeting, and the major item on the agenda was election of a new president and several new officers, and since none of them were opposed, it was really easy election. But to Councilman Pitts, I want to tell you, as Bill Clinton said, I feel your pain. I felt the same way you did my first year on the council, had no significant committees, was always on the losing end of a three to two vote. My things didn't matter, nothing I wanted got through, anything I opposed was always overwritten. So I feel your pain, I know exactly how you feel. I tell you, it may get better as you go along, as you get more seniority, may get better. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Pitts, if I may make one comment?
Yes.
We have the opportunity to, as council members, to participate, and community members, to participate in strategic planning within the city. And I would encourage all city council members to do that. I think it's a rare opportunity for us to forge a wonderful future, and as of today's date, I don't believe that's the case, that all five of us have. So I would just encourage those that have not to step up and do what they were elected to do. Thank you.
On that note, Mr. Racini, I can't spend any more hours on this city than I already do. My first year on council, we had a councilwoman refuse to take committees, and I took three more. And Mayor Nelson, you need to go back and look at what we voted on, because it was not a three-two. It's nice when you continue to say that, because if you say it long enough, someone will believe you. But your first two years here were not a three-two, okay? They were not. You are still pouting because you were not put on the budget and finance. But you know what? It doesn't matter. You can have all the committees you want, we're still elected, and we're still doing our job. But your explanation right now is so insulting, insulting to the public and to an elected official, to say, whoa, you know what, it happened to me, so it's okay that it happens to you. And maybe when you're more of a senior, you'll get your way. Please think about what you said. We're elected officials.
We all have to remember, too, that this is a temp job, and every two years, the body of Villa Park makes a decision. And so, you know, as fast as you got this seat, it can be taken away from you. So I realize that, I know that whatever impact I make, I have to make in short order. So...
Well, we all have the opportunity, as Councilman Racini pointed out, to participate in the development of the strategic plan. You know, whether we supported the development or the action to expend the money for a contract for a strategic plan or not, it's something that the city needs, and it's part of our responsibility to participate in this strategic development of the strategic plan, to guide the city as we go forward. That strategic plan in two years can be changed, but we need to start developing a strategic plan so that we can communicate and provide more transparency to our communities to what we're planning to do and where we're going.
So it's my understanding, so we're adjourning, but it's my understanding that the next council meeting is not on the fourth Tuesday of the month, it's on the third Tuesday of the month, because there was a conflict for Mayor Nelson, I believe you're going to a special district meeting, which is your first loyalty and not to the city. So the public is used to our council meeting being on the fourth Tuesday of the month, but it's gonna be on the third, because you're going to be at a conference for the special districts that has nothing to do with the city of Villa Park. So Steve, let's make sure that we get enough notice out everywhere that everyone knows that our council meeting is not on the fourth Tuesday. Now, what that costs this city is that I'm going to Washington DC, okay, for this city, and I did not stay for, I'm not staying for the whole conference, I am literally coming back after staying one night to make sure I didn't miss my council meeting. Then come to find out, everyone forgot, city new city manager didn't know that the meeting wasn't on the third. But I don't want the city to spend $1,000 to allow me to stay for the entire conference. So by changing that for you to go to your special conference with special district, I hope you enjoy yourself and that you actually come back with something that will benefit the city.
With that, I will adjourn the meeting until September 19th.